Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, minutes from meeting of October 4th, 2016 to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilman Juasty. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Ordinance 16-009, an ordinance amending chapter 19, article 10, section 19-47B of the code of ordinances of the town of North Providence entitled "Two-Way Stop Signs" to prove, to provide for a stop sign on Atlantic Avenue at the intersection of Carter Street. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 16-009?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juasty. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number three, ordinance 16-010, amendment to, in ordinance creating the North Providence Land Trust authorized by Rhode Island Public Laws, chapter 00-260. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 16-010?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Juisty, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Ordinance 16-011Z, an ordinance amending the town of North Providence zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to amend 16, ordinance 16-011Z, motion made by Councilwoman Juisty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Warren. Any questions? Go ahead. Can you just come up to the microphone and please state your name for the record?
I'm Mary Hoffman. I have gotten just a general reference zoning map, and I was looking at some of the changes being made, and I just wanted clarification. When you change to an institutional zone versus like in Plats 1 and 2, it's changed to institutional and some open space. What is the repercussions of that? What does it mean to be institutional? Because there's also, like in Plat 1, which is down near the, with Oscar Tuckett Mills, I guess, that has been changed to some residential and some institutional. What is institutional?
Mr. Westcott, can you just please come up to the microphone? This is Dave Westcott. He's the town planner. He'll come up and, you can stay up there if you want.
Institutional. My name is David Westcott, and I'm the town planner. It's my pleasure to meet you. An institutional zone, is there one specific that you had a question about?
Well, I saw these two here. I know Google near Charles Street, and there's one over here that, in Oscar Tuckett.
Yeah, what that does, institutional is schools, service institutions. That particular one is the Fogarty Center, which is now zoned residential. And the idea is it should be zoned as an institution within the community, like a school, or a church, or a fire department. It's an important cultural service for us.
No, reasonable. And the ones near Charles Street?
The ones near Charles Street are a former renovation, but owned by National Grid that is going to be developed. We're simply recognizing them as open space. They are now open space.
Okay, good. That's all. I saw it, didn't understand it.
Thank you for, thank you, thank you, mister.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions on the, come up, is it a rally? Dave, don't go too far.
Fifteen Wentz Scott Lane. Wentz Scott Lane, when I moved there in 1969, I was one of the second or third houses there, and it was zone residential single, RS. And within the last year, year and a half, a house has been sold, a raised ranch. And the person who bought it rents it out to two different families. And I inquired about it, why it was allowed to be in residential single. And I was told that when they developed Smithfield Road, they, all that area was RG, and they included Wentz Scott Lane is RG. And we're wondering, we were never informed that they changed the zoning. So is it, in other words, is this guy able to keep two families in there?
Here comes Mr. Westcott.
The RS zone doesn't exist anymore. And when the town was rezoned in 1996, I believe it was, the RS zone was replaced with the RG zone there. Yes, the RG zone does allow two families in that house, as long as it's on, that's on Seward Wentz Scott Lane.
And what?
Seward Water Wentz Scott Lane. Yeah. So they are allowed to have two families, as long as the lot is at least 15,000 square feet in the area. The lot has to be big enough.
We have no say on the zoning?
Well, that would have been in 1996. I'm afraid that was before my time.
We never were informed that it was changed. We didn't find out till here ago. So what can we do to get it back to RS?
Even if you change the zone now?
Well, yeah, he's there, he's grandfathered. Right, but in the future.
What you could do is you could apply, if you want to redo that zone, then maybe it's still a building, so you can apply to the council. And the council could essentially rezone that if you wanted it resurfaced.
Okay.
That is not part of these changes proposed here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So I've got to make an appointment and come back.
Okay, come on.
As you know, the zoning board enforces the zoning ordinance. They can't change it because they are, it's enforced, they enforce it. The planning board can. So what you should do is apply first to the planning board. The planning board will refer the zone change just as we did with these. We referred those to the council. So if you ask the planning board to change your zoning, and the planning board concur, then they could refer it to the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westcott.
Just so you know, sir, that back in 96, 97, before my time, when I just talked to the council, by law, they have to advertise. They advertise for three weeks in the paper, and all the maps were in the clerk's office. So that would have been the time to bring that up.
I didn't notice, and I don't think anybody on my street did.
But according to the Supreme Court, they don't have to mail out every notice to every house.
Oh, I was just gonna ask that.
Okay. I'll go be to the planning board. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
You know, I was gonna ask that, if when something changes.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Probably for Mr. Westcott. Because we don't have to notify individual residents that are being affected by this change, let's just say they go to do something to their, their property, and it was changed. Do they have to go through the whole entire process of a zone change back? I know we were having this conversation, and I couldn't get the recipients to come here tonight, which is affecting their land. But do they have to go petition to the planning board, then come back to the council, pay all the fees, or can there be some kind of appeal?
For the most part, what we're doing is zoning them for the way they are now using their property, or the way they should be using their property. These zone changes came from the planning board in 2013. With Ed Savito, they went into the plan in 2014. You have seen all of these, invented them when the plan was adopted in 2015. And now here we are, in 2016, we're actually adopting those amendments. They do three things. First, they protect our open spaces like our ballparks, our public parks, and our conservation areas for our children, and their children, and their children. Number two, they make the zoning ordinance and the council plan match. The future land use map and the zoning ordinance match throughout the town. Number three, they remove a cloud over properties that have inappropriate zoning. Some of our properties, you can't even tell how they are zoned. They're zoned both commercial and residential at the same time. Those are basically problems we, that put a cloud on the property, and we're trying to fix them to make the property more usable and more developable, not less developable. There are two changes here that are not part of the 14 original changes you saw. And the number one of those removes the requirement for a special use permit for a single family in the RG zone. The bottom line is you shouldn't have to go to the zoning board to get a permission to build a single family house in a single family zone. And the second amendment allows microbreweries as a use within our town. We have a blanket prohibition on all breweries, because in the day our ordinance was written in the 60s, a brewery was a big thing, like Narragansett Brewery with steaming vats and huge oil tanks. Now, a brewery is a much smaller type of use. Pawtucket has three or four of them, and there's a couple of more planned. We should be taking advantage of this economic development opportunity. So there is, those two changes are not fixing previous problems in zoning. They're allowing new opportunities for land development. If somebody has a property that is rezoned, that they did not want to be zoned, that they could come back and ask to be zoned back, that they would have to follow the same process we just did to change the zoning here this evening.
Any other questions for Mr. Westcott?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, seconded by Councilman Warren. Any further questions? Motion to adopt ordinance, amendment to ordinance 16-001Z. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, vendor license. Town council will consider approval of a vendor license to Rhode Island Public Health Institute, DBA Food on the Move at 121 South Main Street, Suite 810, Providence, Rhode Island, to sell. At Maryville School at 1135 Mineral Spring Avenue. See agreement with school, and approval from school committee is attached. Is anyone here from Food on the Move? Okay. Okay, as you know, you were here last month. Could you just state your name for the record?
Eliza Cohen.
Eliza Cohen. Any questions for Ms. Cohen?
She got, we asked her.
Yep, she got, we asked her for, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the vendor license.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck with that project.
Where should we send our payment for the permit?
Say that once again?
Where should we send our payment for the permit?
For the, um, does she come to you, Mia?
Is there a fee associated?
The payment for the permit, does she come to you?
For the license?
For the license?
Okay.
Downstairs, right here.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Okay, I'm just gonna go back. Apparently, I made a clerical error, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-011Z.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, victualling license. Town council will consider a vote for approval of a victualling license from Coas LLC, DBA Dabawala Lunchbox at 2009 Smith Street, North Providence. Do I have anyone here from Dabawala Lunchbox? Just please come to the microphone and state your name for the record?
My name is Cappy.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Where you located exactly?
We are planning to for Indian foods. Indian restaurant.
Is that right across the street?
Yeah, right across the street.
I just have a quick question to ask. What kinds of food will you be serving?
We are serving authentic North Indian food, Northern Asian food from India. Basically, the capital Delhi and Mumbai, those places. So the name called Dabawala is popular in Mumbai. The people who deliver the food to the offices.
I see.
So that's the name we plan to.
Do you have menus yet?
Yes, yes, I do have a menu. Would you like to?
If you wouldn't mind, maybe we could take a peek at it and stop by and visit you at your shop.
Absolutely. So I just print it out. I don't have a clear menu.
That's okay. We could just take a peek at it. Thank you.
Mr. President, Councilman?
What are the officer operation?
We plan to do lunch under dinner, 11:32, 11:32, night cannot last.
Night to 10 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve the victualling license pending all necessary requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Canzaro. Any other questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like that back?
No, that's, you can keep that.
Okay.
That's the full menu, so I don't have the printer one. I'll be getting ready sooner day after tomorrow. I'll come.
That's fine, if you want that back, I would.
Good luck.
You need to get the actual license.
Certainly, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Item number seven, vendor license. Town council will consider approval of a vendor license from Rachel Bamber, DBA Bam Novelties, to sell flowers on Thanksgiving and Christmas Day at 1421 Mineral Spring Avenue. How are you again?
I'm good. Rachel Bamber.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bamber?
I do.
Councilman?
1421 Mineral Spring.
That's the corner of Mill Spring and Woodward Road.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the vendor's license.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juisty. Any further questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You too, thank you. Good luck.
Item number eight, Stephen Only Park. Councilwoman Brady requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the various uses of the land at Captain Stephen Only Park. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I put this item on the agenda because I heard from some of our residents who had concerns about the athletic fields in terms of residents who are pet owners, who have dogs, allowing them, when the fields are not being used for play, to use those fields to run free of their leashes and leaving behind them waste. I thought about it for a while, and I really do think that the time has come. I think an acceptable alternative that would work for the pet owners and also help us protect our fields would be to provide, if the town were to provide a dedicated space for dogs to exercise by putting in place an off-leash dog park. I did some very preliminary research on this, and I found that off-leash dog parks are a very prominent and growing trend in the United States. They're growing faster than any other type of park. In 2010, there were actually 569 dog parks in the 100 largest cities in the U.S. That was actually a 35% increase in a five-year period, while parks overall only increased by 3%. In Rhode Island, there are 10 cities and towns that have dog parks. Off-leash dog parks are supported by many well-recognized and respected organizations, including the ASPCA, the American Kennel Club, and the National Parks and Recreation Service. They are particularly helpful for property owners who live in condos, those who live in apartments, and also people who have small pieces of property with not a lot of area for their dogs to properly exercise. I very oftentimes walk Captain Stephen Only Memorial Park, and I noticed that at the end of the perimeter, close to where the nursing home is, there is a large section of land that isn't being used at this time. And I thought it might be a possible site for an off-leash dog park. I would really appreciate it if my colleagues on the council would vote to send a letter to the administration asking them to look into this particular property and any other properties they may be aware of that may be suitable for this purpose. I really think the time has come. So I'd like to put that request in the form of a motion and ask that the administration get back to us before the next town council meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady to send a letter to the administration, seconded by Councilman Canzaro. Are there any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, council members.
Item number nine, cul-de-sac in vicinity of Plymouth Road. Councilwoman Canzaro requests discussion and vote on repairs needed at the cul-de-sac in the vicinity of Plymouth Road. Residents may be present to speak on this matter. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, did we receive any correspondence back on this?
I checked on it. We did, but I checked on it. And when I did, the chief called DPW right there, and then, and they said they would get to it and do it today. So I'm not sure if they did it or not.
I don't exactly know what they're doing in, as far as the letter that we sent. I think it was to ask if the residents could take care of it.
No, they said, the letter stated, could DPW take down the stone, take down the things, or if it wasn't possible?
Then the residents.
If the residents could. So they called DPW that very day.
And then DPW said, yes, they were going to do it?
To clean it up, yep.
Okay.
Did they do it today?
Do you just want to state your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, my name's Chris Mancini, and I live at 41 Plymouth Road, right in the cul-de-sac.
Did they come today?
I'm sorry.
Did DPW come today?
I did not see that. No, sir. I've not heard anything on this topic, other than it being.
So have you seen it? They haven't cleaned it in the last few days?
No. What, I was the one that wrote the letter. And just to clarify, the cul-de-sac, in the cul-de-sac, there is a shrubbery ring with a little retaining wall. For the past several years, I've been maintaining it. However, it's gotten to a point of decomposition where the wall is starting to collapse in areas. The shrubbery is dying. It's posing a bit of a hazard, and it's unsightly. So what I'm seeking, or what our neighbors, I can't see myself, my neighbors, I've got neighbors who have signed the letter as well. All we're seeking is to have it removed, not seeking to have it reinstated, just to have this wall and shrubbery removed. I'd be glad to take on the task myself of reinstating it with maybe some flowers, or some, you know, flag for something, something agreeable by all the neighbors that are part of that cul-de-sac. So that's what we're seeking, not a general cleanup of the area, but removal of that shrubbery ring and retaining wall. I have some photos, if it pleases the council. Fortunately, I didn't print them there on my iPad, but if
I know.
If anybody wants a visual interpretation of what's going on, I've got it here. Otherwise, encourage you to take a drive-by and see it for yourselves.
I think we can attest, I know President Odiello, it's his district and mine, it's all crumbling. So the whole thing is coming down, and that's what we had originally asked DPW. I know the residents would be willing to take it down too. So I don't know what DPW was planning on doing, but maybe if we send them another letter, letting them know that they just want it removed. If they don't want to remove it, the residents can take care of it.
Can we include those signatures? Can we have a copy of that, with the signatures?
Sure.
We did last month.
We sent that to him?
Yep, we got it last month.
You know, if the town is not willing to remove it, I will take on the task myself. I just hope that's not the case, because I will be doing it at my own expense with the help of friends, friends who don't
You shouldn't have to do that.
Right.
You shouldn't have to do that.
So just to clarify, which, this is what I thought last month that we had done, you want it removed?
Just to have it removed.
It should be, and I agree, so.
It's also, you know, I'm an insurance guy, working claims, so I'm probably a little more prone to liability exposures than most. And there are little kids that ride their bicycles around there, and the way the shrubs are, I mean, they're like jagged branches sticking out. I trimmed them back as best I could, but you know, it's a big fall. I'm afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. It's just, you know, kind of a hazardous situation, especially for little ones.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for coming, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to send a letter, CCing the administration, to DPW, that the residents, along with the petition there, they would like that area, the retaining wall and the collapsing wall and the trees, just removed from the area. If they cannot do it, please respond back to this council, and the residents would like permission to remove it themselves.
Second.
Before the winter.
I'll second that motion.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that out loud, that they're gonna remove it themselves. What the administration doing?
Well, if they're not removing it, I mean, we did send correspondence.
We can go back, then we can go back. If they refuse to remove it, then we can go back and say, okay, we give you permission to do whatever you want.
Right.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any other questions?
Council President, in that letter, you just had that the liability exposure to the town.
Right. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10, uncollectible tax. Received letter from Claudette Mooney, tax collector for uncollectible tangible business balances for the amount of $115,649.51 to be removed from the accounts receivable for any tangible business balances for the bill year of 2005. Do I have a motion to remove?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 11, uncollectible tax. Received letter from Claudette Mooney, tax collector for uncollectible motor vehicle balances for the amount of $249,872.98 to be removed from the accounts receivable for any motor vehicles balance for the bill years of 2004, $109,862.2, and 2005, $140,000... Excuse me, I don't have my glasses on. $10.96.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 12, uncollectible tax. Received letter from Claudette Mooney, tax collector for uncollectible real estate balances for the amount of $7,750.40 to be removed from the accounts receivable for any real estate balance for the bill year of 2005. Do I have a motion to remove?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 13, board appointments. Town council discussion in action with regard to appointments to be made to the following boards. A, Board of Canvases, two appointments, one Democrat and one Republican. See resignation letter attached. Just not a grasp if you'd like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Council. Thanks. I'll make this brief. I have good news and bad news. I'll cut right to the bad news. I don't have anyone for the Board of Canvazers. Due to the demands of the position, I just can't get anybody to commit to two day, two full days, next Tuesday and Wednesday, maybe after the New Year. So I don't know what the proper procedure is, procedure is at this point, to get someone on there. But I'll, I don't know.
That's okay, we'll figure it out.
All right, we'll figure something out. Anyway, I, the good news is actually for the personnel board. I know that's been sort of stagnant for a while now. I do have a wonderful candidate named Tony Costello, and he is here, and I just wanted him to say a couple of words about himself.
Sure. Just please state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Costello, 43 Dickinson Ave., and it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you, Brendan. I offer my services for the personnel board as a minority candidate, having served in a similar capacity in my hometown in Massachusetts as a member of the Board of Selectmen there. And I look forward to continuing to serve here in North Providence.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Costello to the personnel board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. C, Board of Tax Review, three appointments to be made. C, Board of Tax Review, three appointments to be made.
Do we have a resignation letter? Who resigned?
We have a resignation letter from the first one, this was from the Board of Canvassers, resignation letter, Justin.
Yeah, I see.
So, they can still have, they still have a quorum though, right?
No, they have trouble getting a quorum.
Oh.
That's why we need a Democrat and a Republican for the Board of Canvassers, and the Board of Tax Review, there's three open spaces, but we can't seem to find anybody to.
Okay, we'll continue to advertise for those. D, Environmental Commission, two mayoral appointments, resignation letter attached.
Send email.
I have a suggestion.
Let me just read this up. To Mayor Charles Lombardi and the Town Council, I've decided to resign my position on the Conservation Committee due to health reasons. I am happy with the projects we have accomplished and trust the members will continue this good work. Thank you, Norma A. Delibrio. Do we have any appointments for the Environmental Commission?
Mr. President, I just did wanna recognize Norma Delibro, she's been an amazing leader and volunteer in the town for many years, she's served on numerous committees, the Senior Board, also she was very active in the Rhode Island State Nurses Association, nurse leader at Rhode Island College, past professor, and just an outstanding citizen, so I just wanna acknowledge her and thank her for her many years of service, and also for the work she did with the Environmental Committee.
Totally agree with you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a suggestion for the Board of Tax Review, because it's such an important board, and I know last year it hardly ever met, would we wanna send maybe a letter to any accounting firms within the town, letting them know, not everybody reads the newspaper, and it's always good to either have an accountant on that board, someone who has financial ability, or even someone, right, but we would have to let them know, like, extend it to some of the professional places, even like the real estate places, a person who sells real estate, you know, they would be good for that Board of Tax Review too, so maybe if we try to find a way to extend it to other people?
Okay, that's not a bad idea, we'll, we'll, you wanna put that in the form of a motion too?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can get a list, and then the list comes back in next month, everyone can agree on where we're sending it, so we're not discriminating or excluding someone, like.
Accountants and realtors.
Accountants and real estate people here in North Providence, asking whether or not they have any, any residents who work for them in North Providence, because these are the positions we're looking for, and they would seem like they're qualified, you know, candidates.
It's a great idea, we may wanna include Bryant University also.
Yep, I mean, if we put a list together and bring it back next month, because we are having trouble, and this board didn't have, so I'll make that in the form of a motion to maybe ask the clerk to put together a list for next month's meeting, we can review it, and send a letter to those businesses looking for.
After next month, look at the list first, turn around the list.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 14, Ordinance Committee Report, Town Council discussion in action with regard to the Ordinance Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Juisty, Councilman?
Make a motion that we pass as submitted.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, do you have a second? Is there a second?
Do we have the report? Do you have a copy of the report?
You have it in your notes, should be in here, right?
Yeah, there's one on there that we have to introduce for here, there's one, the 21st one?
Yeah.
Didn't introduce that ordinance yet.
Oh, yeah.
It hasn't been drafted, it's not here. So, that one we have to introduce next month, maybe? Did you miss the report?
You wanna go through this all?
Would you bring it up, Manny, please?
Yeah. Okay, the procedure, all right, we ready? The procedure for abandoning land in the town of North Providence, motion made by Juisty to add third meeting, two hearings, and final vote, any abbot has 30 days to sign off on the indemnification agreement after the final vote of council is final, seconded by Odiello, motion passed. Do I understand that?
Yep.
Okay. Number two, placement of stop sign at the intersection of Atlantic Ave. and Carter Street, motion by Odiello to approve, seconded by Juisty, motion passed. Number three, placement of stop sign at the intersection of Plymouth Road and Don Ave., motion by Odiello to approve, seconded by Juisty, motion passed. Review the possibility of an abatement for real property on which a historical cemetery is located, motion to table by Odiello, seconded by Juisty, motion passed.
Thank you.
That's all of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 15, Finance Committee Report, Council, Town Council discussion in action with regard to the Finance Committee Report to be presented by Councilman DeStefanis, Councilman?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met this evening, at that meeting, we recommend abating $38,376.71, and we recommend continuing $19,226.20, and the full packet will be available at the clerk's office.
$226.20.
Twenty cents.
Twenty cents, that's gonna be continued?
Correct.
And the rest are gonna be abated?
Would you be able to name the ones that you abated, please?
Yeah, most definitely. There was 11 abatements from Detroit Collision for errant tax bills, and overvaluation of the property, AT&amp;T, the town billed the local franchisee or the local store, and also the corporate headquarters, so the bill was paid twice. Branding LLC, which is the medical center on the corner of Mineral Spring Avenue and Smithfield Road, Countryview Holdings, in that situation, the property had to be abated because under state law, you can't charge taxes for a development until the developer is completed with the project and the project is sold. Again, Detroit Auto Body, Detroit Collision, one was abated, one was held, and then Cityview Real Estate was also hold, was held, because the numbers were not correct, that was submitted.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to accept the Finance Committee Report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Warren, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 16, Tax Addenda, Town Council discussion in action with possible vote with regard to the list of tax addenda received from acting tax assessor in the amount of $1,581.47 for motor vehicles for 2015, and $23,881.53 for motor vehicles for 2016, for a total of $25,463 for motor vehicles, and $99.06 for tangible personal properties. Do I have a motion to grant the addenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Definitely.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Warren, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 17, Tax Abatements Under $1,000, Town Council discussion in action with regard to the list of tax abatements under $1,000 received, $1,397.56 for real estate for 2016, and $13.86 for motor vehicles for 2014, $1,308.63 for motor vehicles for 2015, $5,133.99 for motor vehicles for 2016, for a total of $6,456.48 for motor vehicles, so I have a motion to abate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Warren, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 18, Correction on October Addenda List, Town Council discussion in action with regard to a correction letter stating that the approval of the October addenda list of $4,499.72 should be retracted because there was a duplication of the September list. The addenda for both October and November is on November.
So moved.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilman Juisty, and before we adjourn, I have a letter I'd like to read into the record. Honorable Council President Dino Odiello and honorable council members, please accept my letter of resignation effective November 12, 2016, due to the fact that I will be relocating outside of District 2, North Providence, Rhode Island, and will be unable to serve the citizens of North Providence for the remainder of my term, ending December 31, 2016. It has been an honor and a privilege to hold office with my fellow council members and to serve the citizens of North Providence. While Councilman, I introduced an ordinance requesting to give disabled veterans and senior citizens a tax relief. As I leave my position, I hope that my hard work to implement this request will be carried through and passed for the many disabled veterans and seniors who have been loyal citizens in this town for many years. As I resign, I would like to thank my supporters for their loyalty throughout my campaign and term as councilman. I would like to thank my fellow council members and their, for their assistance and support. Again, it was an honor and a privilege to serve as councilman of District 2, sincerely, William Warren, Councilman, District 2. Before we adjourn. I would like to say, as Council President, it was an honor and a privilege to serve with Bill Warren on this council, and the member, the residents of District 2 and the town were very, very fortunate to have him, he was a wealth of knowledge, being an attorney, and he helped me out a lot, and we may have not agreed on every issue, but through, even though we became friends through politics, I think we'll be lifelong friends, and I appreciate your support throughout the years, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
I'd like to say, Bill, I'd like to wish you a lot of luck in the future, and it was a pleasure being with you.
Thank you.
Bill, I'd also like to thank you for your service, it was an honor and a privilege to serve with you, thank you for all that you contributed to this body.
Right, thank you.
And good luck, enjoy the palm trees.
And good luck to you, Councilman Warren, thank you, you served, I was president also, and I appreciate your support, and I know your future endeavors will bring you much prosperity, so good luck.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?[1796.23]